Good morning. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of Committee the whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm the Chair of this committee. And I am joined today by council members Reich, Bender, Quincy, Worsami, Goodman, Frye, and Palmasano. And we are a quorum of the committee. We have one discussion item today. It is referred by the mayor's office, although I think we are going to have the presence of our city coordinator as well, because this will be something that is overseen by the city coordinator's office. And it is a proposed acceptance of an innovation delivery team grant. I will just note that because of timing issues, and I hope that we hear more about that, this has already gone through two committees. It has gone through executive committee specifically relating to the director position for this proposed innovation delivery team. And then it has also made its way through Ways and Means, although we did not have discussion of the item in that committee. So I believe Mr. Stiles, Mayor's Chief of Staff, is here and will make the presentation. And then we will take any questions.
Good morning, Chair Glidden and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present here today. And of course, on behalf of the mayor's office, we recommend that you accept the grant award from Bloomberg Philanthropies for $900,000 a year for up to three years for the establishment of an innovation delivery team, that you authorize officials to enter into a three-year agreement with Bloomberg Philanthropies, and to increase the 2015 appropriation of revenue budgets for the city coordinator's department by $900,000. Those are the formal actions that we're recommending that you take today. You also have in this council cycle, a separate action to approve a position referred to you by the executive committee to create an innovation delivery director in the coordinator's office. That's technically what we're asking you to do. I'm just really pleased to be here to talk about what this grant is, how it came to our attention, how we were invited to apply, what we applied for, what it means that we get, and what it means that we get to do. And I just want to really highlight that this is a big deal. This is a, first of all, we, the Bloomberg Philanthropies, this is the second round of the Bloomberg Philanthropies Mayor's Innovation Delivery Grant. The first round is a three, this is again, is a three-year grant. The first round started in 2011, and only five cities were awarded this grant. They were, you can see on your RCA, Chicago, Atlanta, Memphis, New Orleans, and Louisville. And used, I guess, used the grant to really innovate in a variety of fronts that were of core importance to them. For example, in Chicago, licensing time for businesses, small businesses and restaurants, in Atlanta to deal with chronic homelessness, and Memphis to decrease retail vacancy rates, in New Orleans to reduce the murder rate, which was the highest in the country at that time, and so on. The innovation delivery grant, and just to pause on this for a minute, is essentially a consulting team that is entirely at our disposition to help us really dig deep into our data in a very data-driven, fact-based way, and come up with innovation solutions, innovative solutions to problems that simply, I mean, for one, for over a year, or excuse me, a decade of budget cuts, we've reduced our own capacity necessarily to do this kind of work in-house. And so this is really an opportunity to have some of the best minds in the business help us, as they say, unlock the creativity that already exists within the city government. I'm just going to read a little bit here from the grant requirements of the innovation delivery grant, because I think that they're really quite interesting. It says here, "Cities are uniquely able to innovate and transform citizens' lives, but many face barriers to developing and implementing solutions to tough challenges. Bloomberg Philanthropies Innovation Teams Program was created to provide cities with a method to address these barriers and deliver change more effectively to citizens. Using the tested, successful innovation delivery approach," which I will speak about just in a little bit in outline form, "innovation teams, called IT teams, greatly reduce the risks associated with innovation and provide city leaders with assurance in their ability to develop and implement effective solutions to their highest priority problems. Innovation teams function as in-house innovation consultants, moving from one city priority to the next. Innovation teams support agency leaders and staff through a data-driven process to assess problems, generate responsive new interventions, develop partnerships, and deliver measurable results." We were invited, and I should say Mayor Hodges' office was invited in September of 2014 as one of eighty-some mayor's offices, to apply for the second round of the innovation delivery grant. You can only apply by invitation. One may not just apply because you feel like it. And we received a good deal of direct encouragement in the month of September from various folks at Bloomberg Philanthropies to apply for this. We are on their map. We were on their map then as a city that really is thinking hard about innovation and looking hard at the core services that we deliver, and how we deliver them, and how we can deliver them better. And they were very encouraged by that. So as we thought about what would we want to apply for, we looked very clearly to the city goals that you adopted about this time a year ago. And the one that we felt really unites policymakers in Minneapolis, unites senior staff, and unites our residents, is the goal of equity, fair and just opportunities and outcomes for all people. And we know, of course, that there are many inequitable outcomes in Minneapolis across the board, in all sorts of areas which the city of Minneapolis does not necessarily directly play in. What we thought made good sense was to ask the question, is the city of Minneapolis delivering our core services, the core services that we deliver to our residents? And this is whether plowing our streets, or patching their potholes, towing their cars, maintaining their bike lanes, inspecting, doing housing inspections, residential inspections, alley sweeps, small business licensing, you name it, the core functions of our city, are we delivering those functions in a geographically and racially equitable manner? I think that we all have gut feelings about that in some ways, but what we have not had here at the city is the capacity to really, in a systematic way, investigate that question, and then really take that data and think in an innovative fashion about what solutions might be. So this was the, what we proposed to Bloomberg Philanthropies. And we were very pleased to learn in late December that we were one of twelve cities out of the eighty-some that were invited to apply across the country who were awarded the grant. We are in the company of cities like Los Angeles, Boston, and Seattle, among others. We were awarded more money than we asked for. So it's a sign, I think, that they were very encouraged by what it is that we proposed. And I think that in addition, it, what was appealing to them about our application was that it also builds on the culture of innovation and results management that we already have here in place in the city and have had for a number of years now, and also some of the data tools that we have coming online, like the intelligent operations platform and the land management system. So really, data sets and data tools that can be effectively mined to do this work. That is the, that is the background. So what, what we get for, from Bloomberg Philanthropies is, of course, as I said, first of all, $900,000 a year for three years. This money may be used for personnel and related expenses. And the innovation delivery model calls for hiring six individuals led by an innovation delivery director, and then very others, other ones that Mr. Kronk can speak to. We, although the Bloomberg Philanthropies model, I think, is geared toward a sort of traditional, strong mayor system, and so the application says that these positions will live in the mayor's office, the mayor will direct them, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it was very clear that that model doesn't fit the hybrid shared governance model that we have here in Minneapolis. And so we contacted Bloomberg very early on and said, "You need to understand our system of government a little bit better. It doesn't look like New York City." And they said, "Great. Thank you for educating us." And so we said, "What, it makes sense to us. It makes, it would work in our system of governance here to house these positions, should you award us this grant, in the city coordinator's office, where they would act most appropriately?" And that is the application. We said, "We would like to submit to you." And they said, "Great. Please do that. We're flexible. Go right ahead." So these six individuals led by the innovation delivery director, should you approve the creation of that position, will then live in the city coordinator's office. The money may not be used for what they call the direct implementation of programmatic activities, which is to say, solutions to the problems that we identify. We need to find other resources to deliver on the solutions, which I'll speak about in a minute. In addition to that, we get a variety of technical assistance. We get folks coming in several times a year directly from Bloomberg Philanthropies to work with our IT team. We get regular, I think, bi-weekly coaching calls from a consultant who works with them. We get a whole cohort of cities, both from the first sort of pioneer cohort that we can rely on, as well as the ones that are walking through this work with us together, and other sorts of training. What is required of us is, first of all, the obvious stuff, semi-annual reporting, significant progress on the goals that we're making, and then two things that I think are of the most interest here to the council. First of all, there is a match requirement. It is a one-to-three match requirement over the three-year lifetime of the grant, which means that over the three years of the grant, we need to invest $900,000 in resources to match the 2.7 million. This needs to be broken up into halves. The first half needs to be delivered by February 1, 2016, and the second half by February 1, 2017. Now, those match dollars, they can be very, very flexible. They can be simply resources that we invest in a solution that we identify. So we may have those resources already dedicated in the budget, or the mayor may propose them in a subsequent budget, and you may approve them in a subsequent budget, and those can count toward what we're doing. We may raise them externally. They're quite flexible about how the, how the dollars can be raised, as long as they're simply not just sort of saying, "Well, we're going to take this percentage of this extant person's staff time," and then apply it to, to the, to the solution. Again, but this is money that we are essentially raising to implement the, the plans that, that we identify through the innovation grant. Secondly, we are required to move what the grant calls, quote-unquote, "some portion," so it's that specific, "of the grant-funded personnel to public funding by February 1, 2017." And this is clearly intended to make this sort of innovation delivery model permanent in the city enterprise. That is pretty much it. The next steps, aside from your taking the action here, and then also taking the action, the recommended action on Friday to improve the position of innovation delivery director, are to begin to identify the priorities that we want to look at. And, you know, there are many. I think the discussion right now is whether to conduct some sort of citywide diagnostic first, to surface the areas that are most ripe for reform, or to work with those departments that are most ready to kind of leap right in and solve a problem. I think that's an open question right now. And once there is an innovation delivery director on board, which the grant requires, happen quickly, by the end of February, then I think that discussion will begin in earnest. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Stiles, for that overview and presentation. And this is a very exciting opportunity. I will tell you, I've had a lot of questions about it from residents who are just curious, what, what might this mean, you know, or they have looked at things happening in other cities and are interested, does that mean we might try this or that? So I think there is definitely a lot of interest. Before, I, I was hoping maybe we could talk a little bit about the position and kind of how that might be housed. I know I've had questions from colleagues, and maybe that might be a little bit for Mr. Kronk. But before we do that, I wonder, just a couple of questions on the match piece.
Sure.
And just, I'm looking, I'm not seeing anybody with their tag up. So let me know if I'm speaking, if other council members want to speak up here. But with the match, just so that I am understanding this, do we have to identify new dollars in the budget to meet the match requirement? You know, I just want to get a little bit better flavor of what could qualify.
Yeah.
So, for example, maybe in Public Works, we didn't add new dollars to the budget, but we said we're going to take dollars from somewhere, and we want to reprioritize them to do X or Y.
That's, that's a perfect example of how we could, how we could meet that match requirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I wonder then if perhaps Mr. Kronk might want to talk just, just a little bit about the position that did go through Executive Committee, the director position, when that person is envisioned to be on board, and who, how that person will report within our organizational structure, and what's your thought on getting these other folks on board?
Good morning, Chair Glidden, council members. In terms of the team that would be established if this grant were accepted, there would be six positions envisioned, the first being the director of the IT team. And that would, position description would be part of what was recommended in the executive committee, and it's the only appointed position that is recommended. So this would be the leader of that team. They would report directly to the city coordinator, myself, and they would oversee five other staff. Those staff are envisioned to be two project managers, a data architect, and two business process and data analysts. We have job descriptions for those other five, and although they are not appointed positions, we would be able to go out with all six of those positions early next week, as soon as the council takes action that were to be approved. We're hoping to recruit for all six of those positions simultaneously, but in an ideal situation, hire the director first, and then have a pool of applicants for the other five positions, so that the director, when they come on board, would be able to be part of determining who the other five positions would be.
Questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Chair Glidden, and thank you, Mr. Stiles and Mr. Kronk, joining us. It's a tremendous opportunity. So thank you for the work to bring this opportunity to us. I did want to talk a little bit about the, the match portion of it, realizing that it may not be a, an additional appropriation that we're going to have to be making. We can put together a lot of things. I think the real cost may be further out, and it may be a good opportunity to use these grant funds to identify additional changes that we need to make in our enterprise. So there may be changes we need to make within individual departments, or within individual management groups. So I don't want to get fixed on the fact that it's going to cost us $300,000. I want to see how we're going to use this money to effectively deliver services across our city in a much more equitable way, and, and use innovation. So from a pure cost point of view, it could be much more, but it could be an investment that we should be making as a conscious decision, as part of our budget process, and this will help guide us to make those appropriate decisions in the years. So I didn't want to get hung up on the fact we're having to come up with $300,000. I wanted to say, man, this is a great opportunity to really figure out how we should invest and change our enterprise to deliver services better across our city. So that's a, that's an important distinction I wanted to carry out. I think I had another question. Oh, it was on, on the, on the work product. This isn't a decision-making that Bloomberg Philanthropies is taking on. They're not approving the direction that we're taking. This is, if I'm correct, understanding, they're just giving us the funding infrastructure to make these decisions by ourselves. These are Minneapolis problems, and they demand Minneapolis solutions. So there's no oversight on the part of Bloomberg. Is that correct?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Quincy, that's correct. I mean, there are, there are semi-annual reporting requirements. They want to know what we're doing and how we're making progress on the goals that we set. They view themselves very much as our consultants. So people that we go to with problems, with issues, with, you know, potential solutions, what do you think? How is this working in other cities? What have you seen? How we can adapt? How can we adapt this to Minneapolis? But in no way is this there signing off on our goals, on our priorities. That's correct.
I think that's a real important distinction to make.
Yeah.
Because I have a...
And they're very, may I just add that they're very explicit about that.
Okay.
They're very explicit that we are here to help you, to, to, to give you, offer you guidance and expertise, and to support your internal IT team that is carrying out your priorities.
And I guess an extension of that, we're going to be providing semi-annual updates to Bloomberg. I imagine through the coordinator's office, this council is going to be able to see the work process, not just the work product.
I would certainly imagine so.
Steps along the way.
Yeah.
That'll be important to do. The other thought was, can we share this information with other jurisdictions within our own region? I mean, St. Paul could be a beneficiary from the work product that we do. Duluth could be a beneficiary.
I certainly think that's, I certainly think that's the case. Again, there are only twelve cities around the country, and we're one of only two in the Midwest that, that were selected in this round. So I think that this puts us on, on the leading edge of cities around the country, and it would make perfect sense for us then, in that leadership position, to share our lessons learned with other cities.
That's true. And I was also thinking, this doesn't directly apply to Minneapolis Public School District, for example, but there could be innovations within there that we could take from our own planning department, or from our housing department, or whatever, and say, "Hey, this is something that you guys really need to understand." So I'd like to make sure that we have our connections, not with, within the enterprise exclusively, but with our jurisdictional partners within the county, school district, park board, et cetera.
Yeah. And Chair Glidden and Vice President, Councilmember Quincy, the, the creation and extension of partnerships is one of the key, they're, they're, one of the keys to the innovation delivery approach, in fact. So I imagine that our consultants will be pretty insistent on our doing precisely that.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Obviously, I'm very supportive of this and excited to begin the work. Thank you.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Stiles and Mr. Kronk. I also think this is a wonderful opportunity. So first off, thanks for all the work that went into getting us to this point. While I see Councilmember Yang is in queue next, I'm a little disappointed that Council President Johnson isn't here, because I know I've, I've heard quite a few heated, passionate rants from her about sort of geographical inequity, which, based on the makeup of our city, is one and the same, oftentimes is racial inequity. But I certainly will let Councilmember Yang speak for North Minneapolis. And I had a minor question, which I think Councilmember Quincy already touched on, but I don't know if it makes any difference. But the, when the money, I think it's the $900,000 per year over three years comes in, does that come in, in the form of a Bloomberg consultants team, or does that come in in the form of money that we then subcontract out to hire the consultants?
It comes in in the form of dollars that we use to pay the salaries of the six people on our staff and meet other related expenses.
Thank you.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You know, I just have a question with regards, I guess, the grant over three years. I mean, it's, it's a substantial amount of money, and I'm wondering, I mean, what's, so we get all this stuff, but I mean, for the Bloomberg Philanthropies folks, I mean, what do they get out of this?
That's a great question, Chair Glidden and Councilmember Yang. I think what they get out of it is the satisfaction of their passion for innovation. They, I've met some of the folks from, from Bloomberg Philanthropies, and Mayor Hodges has had the, the privilege of meeting former Mayor Bloomberg himself, and they are simply passionate about this. They genuinely believe that cities are where, where we can most transform people's lives, and that have the greatest capacity in government for innovating, have the most flexibility, and have the most number of people dedicated to the mission on a regular basis, and closest to the people. And I think they simply are absolutely convinced and passionate that this is, you know, a transformative space in the lives of people. City government is a transformative space, and how we deliver services is a transformative space in the lives of people. And I think that's what they're in it for.
And if I may just add a little bit more to Councilmember Frye's point, you know, one of the big issues that I've seen in the past year that I've been here is just the issue of towing in the city of Minneapolis, and just the inequities around that. And specifically, you know, unfortunately, I mean, I think they've pitted places with denser populations, including North Minneapolis, against, let's say, you know, Ward 13. And, you know, just kind of the, the towing that happens in certain areas, and the towing that doesn't happen in certain areas. And, you know, I'd love to see some type of resolution on that specifically, just because, you know, I mean, from my perspective, the folks up in Ward 5, certainly, when they get tagged and towed, and it causes a heavier burden on them financially and economically than, you know, other folks. And, you know, I just, I think, I mean, there has to be a better solution than what we're doing at this point, because it's certainly, you know, I mean, within Public Works, they make certain assumptions about where they tow and where they don't tow, and those sorts of things. And I think, I mean, underlying those sorts of things are just, you know, assumptions that really just hurt a lot of people, and, you know, I mean, create these sorts of inequities that, I mean, we as government can solve, I hope, with something like this, or, you know, anything else. But I mean, certainly, this is one thing that I'd like to get off my plates, if you will. Thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just want to say how excited I am about this. Before taking office, I worked at four different government agencies at the local, regional, and state level, and experienced there, and then now as a policymaker, how hard it is to find resources for innovation, and even for data, you know, even for taking the kind of careful, data-driven approach that we should be taking to policymaking. Finding those resources is often challenging, even in a time now where we're in economic recovery. So it's really exciting for the city to be able to bring in these outside resources to focus on data and innovation. I think that we will be seeing the benefits of this for many years to come. Hopefully, it will be something that saves the city money over time, as we'll be able to hopefully be more efficient, and again, you know, more proactive in addressing some of these regional racial inequities that, that hurt the city economically. So I'm, I think this is just such a fantastic opportunity for the city. I'm really proud of the city of Minneapolis for being a leader in this way, and thanks for everyone's great work.
Thank you. Thank you. I am not seeing other comments from my colleagues. I'm going to go ahead and move this item, and just as a note, I may have a, just a short staff direction after this that relates more to process, and just making sure we've got a good understanding of process around grants. But I will go ahead and move approval of this item, which is accepting the grant award, authorizing appropriate officials to enter into a three-year agreement, and approving a resolution that increases our 2015 appropriation and revenue budgets for the city coordinator department by $900,000. And just maybe as a short comment, I really appreciate Councilmember Bender bringing up her own personal experiences and kind of relating to this opportunity. I remember having many conversations with our former city coordinator, Stephen Bosacker, about innovation and, and creativity, and how hard it is, especially with, in times of, which we have gone through, of reducing staff, having to focus so heavily on just getting the job done, that there isn't time in sort of your mind space, let alone just your physical space of getting stuff done, to produce creative, innovative solutions. And I know our staff have that capacity within them, they just don't have a way to release it and have it taken to the next level. And that is what I hope happens here. It's not that these six, five people are going to be the innovators. What I really hope is that they are able to take what is the great capacity and ideas that exist within our city and our city workers, and help bring those to fruition, and help prioritize them, and move them to the next level. And so I'm really excited about that, and how that may help promote kind of a better sense of well-being and satisfaction with our own city workforce, and seeing some of their ideas rise to the fore. So with that, all in approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, and that item is approved. I had one just related item that was brought up, I think, in one of our other committees, and that's just that our formal process within the city is that for grants that meet certain qualifications, that they come forward for a formal city council approval process. And as I understand it, this has been sort of a series of directions over time, so we're not talking about maybe one direction. And there's also been comments, I will just say, not related to this, but over the years, from city staff about whether that direction perhaps needs to be refreshed. So on the one hand, I think it's very important for there to be a connection with policymakers and an understanding of sort of, what are we actually applying for, and if we get it, can we accept it? You know, do we have the capacity to accept it? And then there's another issue, I would say, kind of the opposite side of this, which is that we want to encourage our city workforce to seek outside funding opportunities, leverage our opportunities within the city, and sometimes going through the city process, which takes several weeks at the least, is not... several weeks at the least, is not the most efficient and best way to do that. So with that, I am going to do a staff direction to the city coordinator in cooperation with other staff that touch the grant process, to review our existing policies and practices that relate to applying for and accepting outside funding, and to review whether there should be a refresh and update to that guidance, and come back to this committee with some response to that. And so I can work with the city coordinator on what might be an appropriate report back date, but I just think this may be a good way to make sure we have a better handle on the process that supports good oversight, but not restraining our ability to apply for good opportunities. So with that, any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, on approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, and that staff direction is approved. So thank you very much. We now turn to reports of committees, and the first is Community Development and Regulatory Services with Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are 18 items on our agenda for approval tomorrow. Item number one is a resolution giving preliminary and final approval for a bond issuance for the Hiawatha Academies Project. Item number two is moving forward with Green Homes North, Round Four. This is about 13 projects located on the north side, funding for 13 more houses. I will note that some of the original houses are now selling in the $200,000 to $220,000 range, which is just a huge victory. So we're hoping to get to the number of 100 in the next couple of years. Item three is the tobacco dealers' e-cigarette sampling ordinance change. This would just simply allow sampling of e-cigarettes in businesses that sell them. Item number four is the regular liquor business and gambling license applications. Five, six, and seven are all rental license retentions with conditions. Item number eight is reappointing Judge Jim Rosenbaum and Daisy Niggin, and appointing Baratok to replace another resident on the MPHA Board of Commissioners. Item number nine is a bond issuance for the McNamara Center. Item 10 is a reciprocal access and maintenance agreement for Parcel A. We're hoping to break ground on the senior housing project on Parcel A by River West yet this year, but in the meantime, we're going to have, continue the existing reciprocal agreement. Item number 11 is extending Praxis Foods' exclusive development rights for approximately four months till April 30. Item number 12 is accepting some money from Hennepin County and the Akerberg Group to remove asphalt and seed a city-owned lot. Item 13 is submitting deed applications. Item 14 is approving about $260,000 in emergency shelter grant services funding. So this is not for capital, but for service. This is a set aside for service. Item 15 is accepting money from MHFA for our rehab support program. Item 16 is reallocating money within CPED to both the home program and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is money that was from those purposes, dedicated back to those purposes. Item number 17 is a big deal, and no one seems to be talking about it. So I'll just point out, this is executing our option to purchase a large number of lots, about 40-some-odd lots, to combine them with the 50-some-odd lots that we already own, in order to start working on the Humboldt Greenway again. So this is a redevelopment plan that started when I first started on the council and stalled due to the recession, although a lot of the projects were built out there. This is trying to then have the city, again, re-coordinate an effort to build homes in that location. And item number 18 is a good news story. This is accepting a legacy award grant from the Historical Society for the Hollywood Theater Project. With that, I'll answer questions on items 1 through 18.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the next report from Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with that chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee will be bringing forward three items. The first is approving this round of appointments and reappointments to the Minneapolis Public Health Advisory Committee. The second is authorizing $100,000 increase to a contract with Tubman to provide case management services for youth. And the third is authorizing execution of a contract with University of Minnesota for veterinarian services at our animal care and control facility. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Gordon. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management with that chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have three items today. The first two items are to accept $30,000 from the Joyce Foundation and the Target Foundation to be used to support the position of Community Engagement Coordinator and other project costs. And the third item is authorize an amendment to a contract agreement with West Publishing Corporation, West Government Services, for access to database searches for investigative purposes, and accepting a two-year extension and increasing by $105,000, $1,500,000 for a full five-year contract period cost, which is $255,000 payable from the Minneapolis Police Department General Fund.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Yang. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works with that chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding 13 items for full council consideration. Item one is the 54th Street West Reconstruction Project. Item two is a passage resolution ordering installation of parking restrictions at Sixth Street South to meet state aid rules. Item three is an easement agreement with the Minnesota Sports Facility Authority. Item four is an easement agreement with Hennepin County. Item five is the 26th Avenue Street Reconstruction and Renovation Project. Item six is the 9th Street, 11th Street, North and South, 12th Street, North and South, and 7th Avenue, North Street Resurfacing Project. Item seven is the 2nd Street, North, 21st, 30th, 33rd Avenue, North, 42nd Avenue, and Bloomington Avenue, South, and Minnesota 62 Frontage Road Street Resurfacing Projects. The following items refer to Ways and Means Committee. Item eight is an RFP for Water Distribution System Leakage Assessment Program. Item nine is the Granulated Activated Carbon Filter Pilot Project. Item 10 is the 24th Street East, Nellie and Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. There, within the committee, there were some questions regarding coordination with CPED and timing of grants. The committee, Public Works folks, talked with CPED, and they concur that we should move forward, per both departments' recommendation. Item 11 is the Minnehaw Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. Item 12 is the Nawada Boulevard, Minnehaw Avenue Reconstruction Project. And an amendment will be distributed Friday, removing two parcels from the assessment role for that project, based on analysis of the staff. And then item 13 is a low bid for Concrete Idea Incorporated. I will stand for questions, Madam President, or Vice President.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee Agenda with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are 12 items on the Ways and Means Agenda for consideration on Friday. The first is our two legal settlements. Then there's also a authorizing the city to join in a friend-of-the-court brief in support of the president's executive action on immigration. Also, from the city attorney's office, recommendation to execute an agreement with the state of Minnesota for the Minnesota Court Data Services. Then we have a acceptance of the certified local government grant award for this, from the state Historic Preservation Office. We also have the appointments of a number of council member appointments to the Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee. The sixth item is the 2014 Fourth Quarter Gift Acceptance Resolution and Acceptance. We have the authorization and negotiation and execution of an amendment to the parking lot lease contracts with, for the three MINDOT parking lots under I-94. The eighth item is the, is a execution of an amendment to a contract for a traffic-maintenance building renovation project. And also, we have a execution of an amendment to a city contract for the Hiawatha Liquid AC Tank Project. The 10th item is the acceptance of the Twin Cities United Way Grant to help the preparation and writing of the Cradle-to-K report. The 11th item relates partially to our earlier presentation in the Committee of the Hall, was the approval of a proposed position of Director Innovation Delivery Team. And the final item is the approval of a settlement agreement between the city of Minneapolis and Comcast, as well as a passage of a resolution conditionally transferring Comcast franchise agreement in Minneapolis to Greatland Connections, and the change in their corporate governance and structure. Those are the 12 items. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. I am not seeing any questions. And there is one just note I want to make for council members relating to Friday, which is that we will be welcoming a delegation from our sister city of Harbin, China, on Friday, and we will have a short reception that begins at 9:15 across the hall, and then, right before the council meeting, we will have a ceremony thanking them and welcoming them to the city of Minneapolis. So just wanted to let you all know about that. And with that, I believe we have concluded with our agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you.